Welcome to a debate for the Santa Barbara Unified District Area One. I'm Josh Molina, host and co-founder of Santa Barbara Talks, and I'm joined today by my co-moderator Jerry Roberts, esteemed host of Newsmakers with JR. Ballots for the November 8th election hit mailboxes this week, and in a big political change, seats on Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education are going to be chosen by neighborhood district. So tonight, we're pleased to welcome the three candidates for District One, which includes much of the city's east side, west side, and downtown areas. The candidates are retired educator Effie Banjales, Student Affairs Professional Gabe Escobedo, and Executive Director Perrin Dan LaBerge, and thank you all for joining us. Jerry?
So the forum's going to have three sections. First, Josh and I will ask each of the candidates a series of four questions. Our candidates will have two minutes to respond to each, and we invite them to speak or question to each other, and of course, keep things civil. Then the moderators will ask individual questions of each candidate, and they'll have two minutes to answer. And finally, each candidate will have a chance to speak directly to voters with a two-minute closing statement. Josh has the first question.
Okay, thanks Jerry. Since the arrival of Superintendent Hilda Maldonado in the summer of 2020, Santa Barbara Unified's administration has experienced nearly a hundred percent turnover in the executive cabinet. About twenty other staffers have also left the district, and many of these individuals, Sean Carey, Rand Wagnick, Todd Rickman, just to name a few, were longtime policymakers at the district. Do you see this turnover as a good thing, a bad thing? And how do you explain the reason for such a drastic change at Santa Barbara Unified in the last two years? And let's start with Effie Banjales. And take yourself off mute, please.
Yes, I believe that change is always good. There's some repercussion also to get to for old timers, so to speak, to leave, because there's so much knowledge there. But there are others that have been there for way too long, and I think that I have noticed that over the years, it has been very political rather than focused on our students. So, but there's some, I can say Sean Carey, for example, impersonal, whether people like or not, but I think she brought the experience that I have with her, for example, coming to La Cumbre Junior High in a particular class, which, or section, which was science. She was supporting our teachers, she was supporting the fact that teachers were very open to be non-conventional teaching, like not using so much the textbooks, but creating, kids were creating their own. And then she brought supplies for science for the science lab, and I hope that at this time, the science lab is already ready to teach to all the students, not being confined in one particular classroom, but rather sharing. So I will miss Ms. Carey for sure. There are others that, I think, just like me, we move on to do other things, and maybe they're going to focus, they're coming back and focusing on our kids' education and safety. That's what I think, basically, what my hope is that we continue working together, and those people that left the district was for a good cause. And the good cause for me and always will be our children, our children's education, our children's safety, our children's involvement, our parent involvement, our engagement with parents and teachers, and a collaboration among all of us.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I think we want to remind everyone, we're gonna, or tell them, we're gonna give you about two minutes, we'll give you a little room to respond. And so we'll hold you to that. Hopefully, you won't need full two minutes, but you do have it. Gabe, go ahead.
Yeah. It's no secret that there has been tension in the last couple of years. I mean, it comes with a multitude of factors. One, experiencing a pandemic and what that does to classrooms and our teachers, our staff, but mostly our students, and how hard going remote really was. With change comes opportunity, and I think if you look at the new cabinet members, we have five new cabinet members that are people of color. And I was fortunate enough to attend last school board meeting. There are some very impressive folks in this new cabinet, and there's a lot of support from many of the new folks in this cabinet. But much of that tension that I spoke about, I believe came from a lack of communication, and I commend the board, even if it took maybe a little bit too long, the board and the administration for sending out a letter to folks and letting them know that they're going to do a listening tour at all of the campuses. And I think they've attended five or six campuses now, and they're really getting some really good feedback into where those struggles are. It's mental health concerns for our students. It's teachers not having enough, one, us not having enough teachers and support staff. And three is cost of living and trying to keep our teachers here. They're struggling, they love our school district, and they want to be here, but when the cost of living is this high and you have to commute from further and further away, it becomes a struggle. And yes, housing is a big one, one topic that I know a lot about. But as a board member, I'm hoping to find some creative ways to really focus on salaries and getting salaries up to meet the high cost of living here. So I think this is a good first step. I'm gonna push the board to continue the two-way communication between teachers, staff, parents, and students back to the board and administration and trying to address a lot of those concerns.
Great, Gabe. Thank you. Dan, go ahead.
I got it. Just trying to be respectful for any coughs and sneezes in the background. I too have spent the last two board meetings in attendance and participated with some commentary, getting to witness the cabinet firsthand, as well as Superintendent Maldonado. And much of what we hear that's happened at the executive level has been hearsay. I've reached out to a couple of the departing executive members, and we hear words thrown around like toxic environment. If we want change to be ushered in in a positive manner, we need to do it strategically. And clearly, this level of fallout does not represent strategic planning. But when witnessing the board and Superintendent Maldonado in the board meetings, you saw a well-orchestrated machine. You saw efficiency, you saw communication, you saw impassioned leadership, and individuals speaking from a place of experience and knowledge, not just desire and wishes. This is encouraging. No one wants to see this level of institutional loss. It's dangerous, it's precarious, it sends a terrible message, especially in times that are so tumultuous at the school level. But at the same time, maybe we had to take a hard look at our underperformance even prior to the pandemic, and maybe this change will bring something better in the future.
Great, thank you, Jerry.
Okay, we're gonna rotate the order in which we, you guys answer, so we'll start this one with Dan. According to district data, white students across the board score about eighteen percent higher than Latino students in math and about twenty-four points higher in English on standardized achievement tests. To what do you attribute this gap? And what actions would you attempt to take as a board member to help change the status quo?
Well, the two biggest factors we see in the achievement gap, obviously, parent engagement. We are very privileged as ourselves, as a white family, to be able to participate, engage, act as tutors, seek out tutors, reach out to teachers, be much more involved in our students' educational process. This creates dramatic result, and we've seen that firsthand at Franklin Elementary School, where the principal there has driven that home through both extending the school day and creative measures. Her achievements gaps have reduced dramatically, and while I don't have percentages, their success has been marked. But in addition to parent engagement, which isn't easy, because families are busy, people are working multiple jobs, they have other children to attend to, this is not an easy solution. It's one that we have to find creative solutions to. We also have to look at scaffolding better our systems of education, such that there are more tiered opportunities for those individuals who have been pigeonholed in what used to be an ESL program, and you know, we call emergent learners, that they get stuck there, and that's just not sufficient. It's not working, it's a system that is dated, and it's time to make it change. And there's only so much, of course, we can do at the district level, because much of this comes down from the state. We can continue to affirm, we can continue to push the superintendent to make opportunistic changes in how these children are tested, are tested out, certified, and move them on to better forms and better opportunities in their education system.
All right, thanks, Effie. Same question.
We have seen in different schools how they are performing better compared to the past. One of the schools, like Dan said, and I agree with him, it has to do with the leadership. And Franklin School has turned around, the tables around, because there's more parent participation, the principal administration's support, and teacher communication as well. Just because a person doesn't speak the language doesn't mean that he's not going to perform well if the students are given those resources. One example, for example, one example, Montecito and Cold Springs. Although they don't have many students, say ten percent of students are Spanish-speaking students, they are performing above average. Some of them, they're overperforming. But if we go, say, and I'm sorry to say this, but if we go to McKinley or Cleveland School, and they, we question, people question why their, why our parents are taking those students from those schools? Because they're underperforming. Their resources, of course, are different than Montecito, Cold Springs. However, when we give them the right resources, in the participation, we can see the difference. Unfortunately, throughout the state, in California, is the worst in the nation. And even in an amazing school like Adelante, they have a very good, they have very good principles. No principle, but principle, but the principles are, if you're teaching your merchant students, the Spanish-speaking students, they're not performing at great level compared to the Caucasian students or the white students. The performance is, for example, is in math thirteen percent, where the Caucasian is fifty percent. It's one of those things that we see the difference. Thank you.
Thanks.
Resources.
Yeah, when we talk about equity, this is at the heart of the issue. We're talking about outcomes. We're talking about structural changes to our education system that we're seeing right now. They existed far before the pandemic, and now they've been put into hyperdrive. There are things that we do not have a say over, like our emergent multilingual students. Absolutely, but that doesn't stop us from advocating for policy change. But here locally, we need to do more to support our students, and we need to do more to figure out what type of support that they need. One particular method is called MAPGrowth testing, in which it's not a standardized test, it's not a one-size-fits-all. If you test students multiple times throughout the year, and you find where they're deficient and where they excel, and in those areas of deficiency, you can actually use our limited resources to support those students in those areas. There are other opportunities for us to support our students. The state government just expanded their California Volunteers Program. It's called College Core, and it connects students at universities and community colleges with school districts, providing mentorship and tutoring. These students from the universities and community colleges, they get $10,000 towards their tuition and hourly pay. And our students get much-needed mentorship, and it's an opportunity that our school district is missing out on. We're not a school district participating in this, and we have some of the best higher education institutions right here in our backyard. On the school board, I'm gonna push for these partnerships, I'm gonna push for these innovative approaches to support our students, to close the achievement gap and further the excellence for all of our students.
All right, thanks, Josh.
And I just want to remind the candidates that if one of you has a follow-up, you're more than welcome to ask it after the candidate says what they're gonna say. So we're giving you that space to...
Just wanted to note there, with regards to partnerships, the board actually affirmed a discussion about partnership with UCSB. And while that may exist a little bit outside of the program Gabe mentioned, these are avenues that are being looked into seriously, because we have both an HR problem as well as long-term shortfalls in revenues that we're going to see coming down from the state in the future years. We're going to be funded at the same level we are now. So we're gonna have to get more creative for staffing and support.
Okay, thank you.
I also would like to comment about the gap. And I think that the three of us could agree on this one. Teachers need more support in the classroom. As an instructional assistant for twelve years, we have to almost try to be in two or three places at the same time. There was a shortage of substitutes, a shortage of teachers, a shortage of instructional assistants. One thing that the district lacked, and that was before and during the pandemic, even especially during the pandemic, is that we will not train. Teachers, and we were thrown under the bus, we were using different technology. Teachers were using the Apple computers. Your children were given the iPads, and we were given Chromebooks. So I had to go to the library, and I said, can you issue me an iPad? So it was issued an old iPad, it was not exactly compatible with the new iPad that it's got. And then I went to the district, and I said, I want a stand. So I, I, I was told only for teachers. So if we're not provided, if instructional assistants, they're not enough, and not providing that, 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 those tools, how are we going to be able to help them? It was very, very stressful.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's move on to the next question, and I think we're gonna start with Gabe first. I think you're up. Children from Latinx families, according to Santa Barbara Unified School District data, are more than twice as likely to be placed into special ed classes. Why is this, from your perspective? The district is trying to address this, you know, they had a board meeting, and they are making progress on this. But why does this happen? And what would you, as a board member, try to do to set policy that prevents this trend from continuing?
Yeah, it's institutional racism. It's the fact that we see this a lot with our multilingual students. If they first come into our school district and they are primarily Spanish-speaking, that the tests are geared towards English speakers, that the tests don't accurately reflect where the student is. And this is adapted over time and made progress, but there's so much more work to be done. Other times, it's an assumption, and we talk a lot about implicit bias. It's very much implicit bias on where that student is, rather than accurately reflecting where that person is in English, math, in a variety of subject areas. There a lot of times, the folks that create these tests or these assessments are not people that share the life experience of the students they're assessing. And that's a big part of the discussion that we're having in this school board race, is bringing that other perspective. And you know what? Bringing other folks that have different life perspectives to the table. It's when you're designing assessments like this, that determine outcomes and process and school experience for these students, you cannot just fall back on what the status quo is, on what we've always done, and just leave it chalked up to that. You end up with the same results year after year, and it gets worse after you experience something like a pandemic with remote learning.
Okay, thank you. Dan LaBerge, you're next.
So while we can't deny a certain amount of institutional racism, our community has been very diversely populated for decades, and we've become more and more aware than any other state in the union as far as accepting and embracing our diversity. But to deny that it exists would be foolish. But much of this, I think, falls down to the convergence of language skills. And as we've learned at Adelante, while there's a drop-off in the early years of both modeling English and modeling with Spanish children, the makeup over time seems to really benefit those children who would otherwise be emergent, of emergent capacity, because they are learning in their native tongue. And this seems to provide that ability to really convert language at a much younger age, and allows them not to be pigeonholed into special ed. But if a child is stuck because they can't read, or they don't have a fully-developed language capacity, it would be very easy to misplace them, misdiagnose them into some kind of special ed category, because you couldn't gather all the information. And if their parents aren't involved and engaged in the process, that's only gonna continue to hamstring the system. And with a system that has a shortfall of resources, what do you do? Do you just mainstream them and then let them fall farther behind? Or do you try to give them special support in order to try to bring them up and to capacity? And it's a conundrum. It's a lack of resource, but I think a lot of it comes down to that convergence of language skills and recognizing as we're slowly doing, that those native speakers need to be native. End of story.
Okay, thank you, Effie.
Well, we know for a fact that our Spanish-speaking students have been tracked from the minute they're enrolled. The minute that they turn, they, they, they enter, they enroll, the parents enroll the kids, they should be told that their kids are going to be put in a Title I category, which means the more Spanish-speaking are in the school, the more money the school will receive. So resources are there. According to the governor, he addressed the state and said, for every child, and probably said, every child in California gets about $23,000 a year. If the state doesn't, those $23,000 a year per kid, then the money is right there. It's the people, we need more assistance, the resources, we need to tailor them to the needs of our kids, not only Spanish speakers. There are many kids, especially now coming, that are not speaking Spanish, but they speak another dialect. That is part of the culture, that is part of the ethnicity, so there should be. And to go back to the Latinx terminology, I don't accept that, because we're one of Latinx, like all those, no. We are either Mexican, we're Latin American, we are all on the continent. Nobody brought us here, we're here already, so it is part of our culture, we identify with each other. But we need to know, and from the very beginning, to see whether that child or those children speak Spanish or any other language, and then immerse them as soon as possible from early age with people in the classrooms, that they can support them. Good Spanish, good English, or someone that at least will know what the dialect is. There is a lot of, there's a lot of Nahuatl now coming from Guerrero. There is a lot of people from Oaxaca, and it depends what in the area where I am. There's a lot of people from Nahuatl. They already know, we know, Aguacate, Aguacatl, that's Nahuatl. Morcajete, which is the mortar, Morcajete, and things like that. So why don't we ask them, what is the dialect they're speaking, and incorporate them, embrace them, embrace the culture and learn from them?
Okay, all right. Thank you, Effie. Appreciate that answer. Before we move on, anybody have any follow-up? Are we good?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I mean, in this discussion, when we're talking about supporting our students, especially in this situation, and I imagine we'll get this special education in general. But there's tons of grant funding at the state and federal level. Right now, grant writing is split up amongst multiple people. I think our school district, like other school districts have done, we need a dedicated grant-writing person that can access this funding and bring it here locally. And there's a lot of grant funding out there exactly for what we're trying to do. Everything from anti-bias to support services to multilingual education programs. It's out there, but we need someone dedicated to bring it back to our school district. They'll pay for themselves ten times over.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, you're up.
The school board recently approved the expenditure of $66,500 on a anti-blackness and racial climate assessment. I know we've all been aware of this ongoing scandal that's broken in Los Angeles the last couple of days, where the newspaper has reported on a secret tape recording that reveals Latino city council members strategizing about how to take political power away from blacks. Do you believe there are differences in how the school district should address anti-blackness and anti-Latino racism? Effie, you're up.
If I may go back to the special education, once so many Latin American students are in special ed, is because it's easier to put them in a special education, and instead of attacking the problem itself, learn to deal with the family, talk to the parents, invite them, so you can tell what is the strength of the students. In regards to allocating money, we need to stop outsourcing, and we need to stop all this putting money into, allocating money into a program that might not work. Why don't we ask our Latino family? Why don't we ask for an American family, what is that we need? If you let us talk, if you listen to us, as a board member, I'm going to listen to them. I'm not, I'm not going to close my door and not, and just take and raise my hand and say, I know. I'm going to really focus on what is, where the money is going to be allocated, and talk to the parents, so they can tell me exactly what they need and really help out. Because it's not, obviously, it's not working. Yes, there's a lot of grand money, there's a lot of people that are willing to pitch in, but why don't we ask the parents first?
How about this question about racism?
There is discrimination.
Between how you address anti-blackness and anti-Latino race? Is the question.
The question, how do I address it? By putting out there and saying, it does exist. There is, there is bias against the Latino, the Latino students. There's bias against not the non-Caucasian students, and we are put in a peril in which we are getting behind and behind every single year. What is, and I brought up that before, if we have, if all the schools have put their resources to work, our Latina students, why are they performing much better in Montecito and Cold Springs? And why not performing as well in, say, Harding School?
All right, thank you. Gabe, you're next.
So we, I, again, at the last school board meeting, they discussed this consultant, what they would do and what this anti-blackness racial climates assessment would do. It was absolutely the right move to make. And what I'm hoping is that throughout this assessment, when we finally get to the end of the assessment, that there need to be clear, time-sensitive, achievable goals set from the information that we learned. Your question about, is there a difference between discrimination against Latino or anti-black behavior? Absolutely, there is. And the fact is, is that anti-black behavior, the culture that exists now, anti-black behavior is far more accepted and far more prevalent. And we don't have to look much further than the information that was shared at the last school board meeting, that in just one month's time, there were twelve incidences of of racial discrimination, ten of which was using the N-word. And the other two were directed towards our Latino students. Now, I said that there's a difference, but coming out of this anti-black racial climate assessment and achievable goals straight from that, it's going to benefit both populations. There anti-blackness is a really tough nut to crack and something that is deep within the history of our nation, the history of our city, quite frankly. And by making progress and the type of changes that we're gonna have to make to the structural system in our school district, is not only going to benefit black students, it's gonna benefit Latino students too. And quite frankly, I think it was the right move to make. I think I'm really excited about the changes that are gonna come out of this, because in addition to providing a better space and better culture on school for students, it's also talking about teachers and staff.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, I was a tad skeptical at first, listening to the campaign being presented, not from the sake of the intention of the presenter, but spending money on surveying parents and especially students, it first seemed a soft sell, a little bit of, we had a bad incident. we had a bad incident here, we really want to do our due diligence, create a lower threshold of liability. What's the outcome? You know, is racism, racism? But what we really learned in listening was that this racism was that of Latinos assaulting that of a black young man. And much of the most forward aggression and bullying seems to go in that direction. Whereas much of the racism that we're seeing to Latino families at this point, because it's on a broader scale, is systemic. It's sort of holding them down and holding them back, limiting them, not allowing capacity. And so while there are definitely overlaps between the two populations, because they are distinct, they come from different histories, different backgrounds. Their, their history here and even in our community are much different. We have Latino families here that have been eight, nine generations, and black families that have been one. We have to take all those into account and recognize the distinctions and differences. But there are definitely root, as Gabe mentioned, there are definitely root limitations and barriers here that are creating repeated racism year after year that we need to get hold of. And I think a survey of this nature will at least start to give us an insight, what parents see, what teachers see, and most importantly, what students are really seeing, because most of them won't speak up. We've developed a tremendous bystanderism in our community, especially at the student level, because they're afraid of reprisal. And so hopefully, if we can get a much larger response, we can then create actual items to make a difference.
Fair enough. Thanks.
Great question, Jerry. All right, we got some good, good answers there. Okay, interesting answers. All right, so I'm, I'm gonna move on and we're gonna move to the section of the discussion where we're gonna ask individual candidates questions. So I'm gonna start with asking a question of Dan LaBerge. Dan, Santa Barbara Unified is about 60% Latino, Latinx population. Both of your opponents are Mexican-Americans, Latino, Latinx. How will you, Dan, be able to identify with Latino, Latina, Latinx, Mexican-Americans, Hispanic students? How will you be able to identify with them? And what would you say to voters who say you lack the cultural experience that your two opponents have to understand a majority of the issues facing the district students?
To understand someone's perspective doesn't mean you've had lived it. And to represent a class of population that you loosely unify doesn't make you any more representative than anyone else. Making yourself available, showing that you're compassionate, being willing to make a difference, help out, as we do with our nonprofit mothers helpers. 95% of the people that we help there and work with on a daily basis are the same population. And even worse, many of them are homeless and completely impoverished. Reaching out and being a member of the community that wants to help, knows no race, knows no language barrier, knows no limitation, all those things are overcome, are easily overcome with effort. The fact that when we talk about real representation, the population of our schools are that of our students. And the first direct stakeholders above them are their parents. And like Effie knows, to not, to, to know the pains of your children, to know the struggles of your children is something exclusive to that population. And again, we work with, at Adelante, we work with these families all the time. We're a minority in our school. We accept it, we embrace it, we learn from our fellow parents. And while some people may look at us differently, we try to keep a very open mind and open door. Anybody who's reached out for help, we have always been there for those community members. So I think by leading by example, showing a willingness to do the work, not afraid to get dirty, reaching across the aisles, accepting a lesser role, as we often do, and, and let others lead, has been the way we've moved forward in our community for the last 15 years and really for all of my adult life here in Santa Barbara, but also at our school and our nonprofit.
Great, okay, thank you, Dan. I'm gonna go two in a row here, Jerry. Got a question here for Gabe. Okay, so we, we put Dan on the spot here with a question, we're gonna put you on the spot, Gabe. You know, Dan LaBerge has talked a lot about the importance of being a parent and the perspective that brings to school board service. You are not a parent, okay? And you know, that's been an issue that has come up, you know, certainly privately, you know, a little bit publicly among some of the campaign, you know, candidacies. How important is it for a school board member to have parental experience? And what do you say to voters who look at you and say, you know, Dan, Dan is a parent and Gabe is not, and we're gonna go with Dan because he's got that, that sort of experience that, that Gabe doesn't? How would you respond to that?
Yeah, I'd say, you know, being a parent is not a prerequisite for being on the school board. But what should be a prerequisite is having someone on the school board that is willing to listen, bring other perspectives in, other life experiences, and certainly parents check the top of that list. Being a school board member is, you weigh in on policy, you listen to multiple stakeholders, you do your research, you show up prepared, you make policy decisions from the perspective of how is this going to affect people in their day-to-day lives? That's what I do now. I do this on planning commission, I did it on community formation commission. I do it out in the community when I'm doing community organizing work and coalition building. This is what I do. This is my experience. And everyone that has taken the time to actually talk to me walks away knowing that I'm earnest and sincere in why I want to be on the school board. Yes, I don't have parent, I don't have kids, I'm not a parent. But when I see kids in the neighborhood out playing in front of my house, when I see them walking to Santa Barbara Junior High, because I only live a couple of blocks away, I don't see just kind of a stranger. I see my nephews, my nieces, and oftentimes I see myself, because a lot of the struggles that they're facing are struggles that I had to overcome, my family has had to overcome, my nephews and nieces have had to overcome. And I wouldn't be here sitting in front of you if I wasn't fortunate enough to have people in my life with the resources, time, and the willingness to be there for me, help me navigate systems that my family never had to navigate. I wouldn't be here in front of you. But while I have all of gratitude in the world, I was lucky. And I don't think that those kids playing out in front of my house, walking to school, need to rely on luck in order to be successful. That's not what this is about. They need, we need structural changes that have equity and opportunity and outcomes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Effie, we'll start, this one's for you. Let me re, re, reset my clock here. As you know, teachers' unions are very powerful in California's public education system. And one manifestation of that is that they're generally opposed to expanding the number of charter schools in local districts. Santa Barbara Unified now oversees three charters. Would you, as a board member, be in favor of expanding the number of charters to give parents more choices? Or would you oppose granting more charters?
I will give the parents the choice to go take their kids to charter schools when, because charters will have demonstrated that they're performing better, kids perform better. Unfortunately, the unions are on the way and teachers, for whatever reason, some feel intimidated to go with the flow. And I don't think anyone should feel intimidated by expressing their own opinions. Now, our public school system is obviously failing, but we can do something. Just look at Franklin School, look at other schools that are performing and they turned around. But the other schools that were doing really well and all of a sudden they, they go, they go really bad. So I, I will support definitely the charter school. We have, we have very good examples. And going back, if I may, with how to present ourselves before our children, before our community, it is very important to speak the language also, what the right to understand. And I believe that it should be a prerequisite for a board member to be a, a, a parent. You cannot feel, Gabe, the, the pain when your child is suffering at many levels. Dan and I would know, he has young kids, but as an older, you can see many parents out there in, in our community, they're suffering. Some, they, they went to jail, others are dead because of bad influences or because they were just leaned towards that, that path sadly. Because we didn't help them from the very beginning and we tried to, to cover the hole when, when the hole is wide and we need to do something. So it is important to identify as a parent. It is important to identify as, in my case, as a grandmother. And it is important to be talking to the community, not to knock at the door every November and get the vote. Talk to them, spend some time, talk to anyone on the street and tell them what you're running for, not to get the vote. I'm not a career politician and I am here to help everyone in general. Our parents need a voice and our kids too.
All right, Gabe, Effie was, made a direct point. She says, you're wrong on this, she and Dan are right, it should be a prerequisite. I give, why don't you take 30 seconds to respond to that?
Yeah, I, I just disagree. I, I think that yes, that perspective is important. It's the reason why that I have actually been knocking doors and I've been talking to folks. And I've been talking to folks who primarily speak Spanish. In fact, one of the conversations that I had just last weekend was from some parents at an event that I held who showed up, they weren't even in the district, and they showed up to talk about the struggles that they're having with their student, who would love to attend after-school programming, but because DP only has one bus scheduled after school, they don't get to access it because the student can't wait beyond that bus because they have no other way of getting home. Their parents work multiple jobs. So yes, again, this is what I do, is I bring folks into the process that don't normally have a say in the process. I bring their perspective. I go out and actually try and talk to them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
May I, may I say something about it?
I think we're done on this, on this one, Josh.
The district is offering, the district offers tutoring after school. I'm sorry, Gabe, at the junior high, high school level, you can go to any school and, and the kids, they can have tutoring. Maybe it's something that we need to let the parents know. Doesn't matter in the area where you live, you can go to any junior high and high school to get help.
All right, thank you, Josh.
Okay, thanks, Jerry, another good question there. Okay, so I have one more question for, for Gabe here, okay? So, Gabe, you announced a run for California State Assembly not too long ago. And then you chose not to run because of Greg Hart announced he was gonna run. And for the sake of the party, you know, it was not good to have two strong candidates vying for that seat. So you stepped away from that. You have served, you do serve on the planning commission, you were a leader on the community formation commission. Prior to that, you did seek an appointment to the Santa Barbara City Council. You're obviously very involved and politically active. But some political insiders say that you're kind of just looking for a seat to serve in. This will be the third one you're attempting to get, to, to serve in an elected or appointed situation. How can voters be assured that this school board seat is really where you want to be and not just a political opportunity?
Yeah, I, I hear through other people, folks say this, that they hear from about this. But you know, every time that I've, whether it was appointment for city council, whether it was getting on planning commission, whether it was community formation commission or the assembly, all of that has come from my personal experience. See, I believe there's, there are a few ways to actually affect change. And the only way to affect change is to roll your sleeves up and go and do the work. And I've done the work and I've demonstrated history of doing the work. When it was city council, it started in affordable housing, environmental policy. And I didn't get it and I could have just said, you know, whatever, I didn't get it and walk away. I went and I applied for planning commission, became the youngest planning commissioner the city had ever appointed, became the chair and affected change through the housing element for truly affordable housing. Community Formation Commission, I lived most of my life with cousins, friends. My father spent most of my life incarcerated. I wanted to affect change in the criminal legal system, so I rolled up my sleeves and I did it. And assembly, assembly, the largest part of my platform in the assembly campaign was education. And it's because there are few things that we cannot change at the local level that we have to change at the state and federal level. And it was an open seat and I wanted to talk about some innovative ideas. And so I did it. And I dropped out because, not because Greg Hart jumped in, but because I didn't see a path to victory. And I'm now in this race to affect more change on something that I know deeply about, that I understand what it is like not to feel like schools are for you, to know what the barriers are. And so I want to affect, use all of the skills, all of the experience that I have, all of the relationships I have in the community to do that for our students and our families.
Great, thank you.
Question for Dan. On your website, you state that you will, quote, prioritize responsible fiscal spending. Would you just briefly break down the district's current budget for us and explain specifically how you think responsible fiscal spending is not currently being carried out?
Well, without the budget sitting in front of me and not being privy to budget meetings, I can only speak in general terms. I know we're spending somewhere around $230 million, roughly apportioned for 13,000 students. Currently, there are no egregious concerns about spending, except going forward, we know two things. One, we know that the budget windfall that the state has been enjoying, the surpluses, is going away and not projected to be present in next year. So that means some of the extra funds that have been offered and benefiting our community are going to disappear. Secondly, some of the monies that are being utilized for specialized programs and even counseling are being provided through monies that have been dictated through both the federal government and the state government for COVID relief. Those monies are going away. So being very aware of those kinds of longer-term and shorter-term concerns, limitations, and structures are something that my business background, my master's in business, really provide me ease of wandering through a spreadsheet, feeling very comfortable with the acumen to decipher those both long-term and short-term budgetary concerns. But as I said, I'm not privy to the open budget in front of me. I haven't looked over its multitude of pages. I know the board is scheduling not one, not two, but three thick meetings before they even put the budget onto the agenda. So this is not something I can speak to in specific terms anymore than I did.
All right. Well, you're close on the 230 million, I think it's actually 214, so that's, that's pretty good. Effie, a question for you. As you know, the literacy rate in Santa Barbara schools barely reaches 50%. What changes do you think the district should make in ensuring that all kids learn to read by third grade? And specifically, do you think the district should continue with the so-called balanced literacy approach it's been using or the scientific literacy approach, which heavily, more heavily emphasizes phonics?
I think that our district should consider, adopt the, the curriculum that, that based on phonics. We need to immerse our children from the very early age to know how to read, write, and, and speak in, in a correct way. If we wait until they're in third and fourth grade, they're going to fall behind. By the time that I junior high and high school, like I have seen, they're really behind, they're barely reading. Especially if, if you give, if you bring the literacy in phonics, literacy in math at early age, they're going to be able to succeed or, or at least not to fall as behind as they're falling right now. It is ridiculous that when you are talking, and sad, when you talk to the kids, they're not speaking and they're not writing, not only at grade level, but they're not writing correctly. So we need to teach them literacy, we need to teach them phonics, and we need to make sure that we have trained. I know that we have amazing teachers, but also train educators and train pedagogators. And we need to give teachers more pedagogators because they don't have enough. They have to deal with kids from, 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 uh, children with disabilities, regular kids or so-called regular kids, and gifted and talented. The, 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 the gifted and talents, and many times they finish their, their, their assignments. And then what? The, 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 the gifted and talented, and many times they finish their, their, their assignments, and then what, what, what is next? We need to tailor also, we need to, we need to help them out as well. And then what about the kids that are not reading, reading or writing at grade level? Not every kid is equal. Every single child is different. Even among the, the, the kids with disabilities and, and regular students, they don't read, they, they do not, they do not earn, learn the same way. Some tactile, some visual, you name it. We need to address that, like.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think uh, that, that wraps it up for all of our questions. We're gonna move to closing statements, and so we're gonna give you each two minutes to uh, make your final case for why uh, you should be uh, the, the one that people vote for. So we'll start with um, Effie.
In, in the classroom, helping the students, service our students, service our parents, talking, working with teachers, have prepared me to understand what the needs of every child has, from special end to gifted and talented. We need to listen to them, we need to see them. I am the person that has the experience in the classroom, outside of the classroom, in the community, in the office, doing all, wearing so many hats, even uh, doing some first aid, which I didn't mind, even going with kids to the hospital, and I can attest to that. Or, or helping the students when, when they have a cut and being able to understand what, in their own language, what was wrong. It is not enough to say enfermo. It, you need, really need to know what is going on and in many, in, in many situations. So it is important for you, for the parents to be en- engaged, please. I, I invoke your vote, and I'll be honored to be your representative. I speak your language. I live in the community. I have worked with so many of your kids, some already parents and, and very proud, others are working, and when I go to the community and I see those successful kids, I say, Mrs. B, and they're working, they have benefits, and they were, some of them in, in troublemakers, so to speak. They, they, they're, they're excelling. That is my, it, it is a triumph, triumph for me. But when I see kids, and I have seen them even in my own neighborhood, they're falling into drug addiction or alcohol, and they're homeless. That is not, it, it hurts my heart. We need to know more, and we need to start when they're in pre-k. When they are, the earlier, the better. Vote for me. Um, I'm your gal. Voten por mí. Yo hablo con ustedes y yo soy de la comunidad y ustedes me conocen aquí. Gracias y nos vemos muy pronto.
All right, thank you, Effie. Gabe Escobedo, you're up next.
So this election is important for a number of reasons. One of which is, this is gonna be the first time that we've had district elections for our school district. Trusty Area One is the first and only majority-minority district. Why is that important? Because I am running for this office because I understand so many of the challenges that these students and these families face. I told you a little bit about my story and how fortunate I was and how our students shouldn't rely, their success should not rely on luck. But that story, my story of being successful, those are the stories we always tell. For every story like mine, there are hundreds that never get told. And I would bet everything in my pocket that hundreds of our students, their stories never get told, they never, never get considered in these policy conversations. I've demonstrated in planning commission, on the community formation commission, bringing those voices to the table and affecting change, policy that affects their everyday life. I know District One, I am District One, I'm embedded in District One. I have relationships, and I've proven to make those work. I'm asking for your vote because this election is important for our students. We are on the other side of a pandemic and so much learning loss and so much change needs to happen. We have a lot of opportunity. I've done it in other roles and I'm ready to do it again. So I ask that you vote for Gabe Escobedo for trustee Area One.
Great, thank you, Gabe. Dan LaBerge, you have the last word.
Ooh, boy, pressure's on. Thank you so much. Uh, I am running for school board as it is something that is long on the radar, is a way to contribute to the betterment of our community via our children. It is something that our family is highly committed in. Uh, given our nonprofit engagement of the last thirteen years, recognizing that every child can make a difference if you make a difference in their lives. We've supported Adelante Charter School for the last eight years, uh, partly in any resources they need, every environmental cleanup they need, I mean, looking they need done. Um, but also serving on multiple school boards as well as a school board at Santa Barbara Junior High and their site council. Um, I've been highly entrenched in the process, learning is like, continuing my own education by getting my MBA in twenty nineteen, wanting to know more, understand more about sustainability and nonprofit management. I'm committed as a parent, as a school board member, as a community member, in a district to where I've lived for the last fifteen years, in a county that I've lived for the last fifty years, and a home that my children's great-great-grandfather built in nineteen thirty-one. We are as entrenched in this community as any, and very committed to recognizing that we all will do better and we all do better for everyone. My name is Dan LaBerge and I ask for your vote support in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Effie Henya Benyales, Gabe Escobedo, Dan LaBerge. Thank you for your time. Jerry, thank you for co-moderating this, and uh, good luck uh, to all of you candidates, and election is November eighth. And uh, thanks for um, all of your participation. Have a great day.
Thank you, Josh. Good night, Gabe. Good night, Effie.
Thank you so much. Good night, Dan. Good night, Gabe.